Back to order. Next item is a further discussion of senior center sites and discussion about the formation of a senior center building committee. We'll start with the second one first. I think it's one of the things that we did talk about with town meeting is that we would have a committee that was designed specifically for overseeing this project. And we need to discuss who we want to have on that committee so we can post it. And this would be a select appointed committee. So we need to design it, post it, schedule interviews, and then give them their marching orders.
Well, I just want to say about the building committee too. And you're right, it is kind of a special committee because I always remember the building committee for the library and how Heather obviously was very much involved in that. But that committee, probably a good idea to look to see the expertise that was on that because they did such a fabulous job, I thought. I mean, they really knew what they were doing. And not that they were involved in planning or construction or anything like that, but they had that background so that they're able to really do it in a very, I think, educational and cooperative ways. So I think it's a good idea.
We've been very fortunate on a number of the building committees, particularly for the schools, to have some of the local builders who have a lot of experience who actually sit in on that. And on the Lawrence Windows Project, for instance, both Patrick Callahan and Michael Duffney are sitting in on it. They actually, their experience is extremely valuable in providing advice and moving forward. So I would strongly recommend that we reach out to them and ask them to be involved in such a building committee.
I think the first thing is to figure out how many people we want and describe them without describing their names. So we could say we're going to have nine members of the committee. We'd like two of them to be local builders. And this is just where we are right now. And I would suggest that nine, unless we...
I just think seven is so much better. When you go to nine...
Let's see if we can do seven.
It gets overpowering.
Okay, so...
Seven, at least in my experience, seven has always worked very well.
And I think we'd want someone from the council and agents as a representative.
Yes.
Generally, we have a member of the board selectmen as part of that committee. You'd suggest two builders?
I would.
You have to be careful, Stephen.
I wonder whether you'd like us to take a look at the composition of that former committee and make a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, too.
All right, so we'll sign maybe on our May ninth meeting.
Yeah, it was a very, very successful group.
It was a very successful group.
On discussion of the sites that we're just still looking into, I just want to bring up the, we've heard a lot of people contacting the selectmen, writing letters about considering the Gascanti site. And I just want to put that out there still. I'd like to get as much feedback as we can from the public, either pro or against, because I'd rather get that feedback now than we move four months down the road and people go and say, "Well, why didn't you think of that?" And so there's just been enough push there about trying to tie in the football team, moving out to the high school, you know, maybe you can tie in the multipurpose field there at the same time as we consider the Gascanti as a community center, as a joint younger persons and a senior person, you know, two buildings that are connected. And just want to have that idea raised again. We may need to dismiss it because people are so much against it, but I would like to raise that issue either with this board or with the general public to get back to us on, is that something we really should be pursuing? If it is, we're going to have to come back to our consultant and get a lot more information about it. Or we could say, no, we have located enough and we don't need to get that information. So discussion among the board. Mr. Madison?
One of the strongest arguments I've heard in favor of reconsidering that site is that it is the demographic center of the town. It's on public transportation. It is within walking distance of a number of people who are likely to use that facility. That has a lot of merit in my mind to reconsidering that site. I know there's all the traffic issues associated with it, but I keep asking myself, can't we use Dillingham as an entrance to mitigate those traffic navigation issues that we all see, especially at the intersection with, I'm sorry, drawing a blank on the road that's right across from me. No, the right cross from me enters to Scranton Avenue is what I'm thinking about. It's such a difficult and busy intersection. So, you know, if we could look at an alternative way to come in and out of a senior center located on that site, there might be a way to mitigate some of those issues.
Ms. Moffitt?
Are you thinking of using the existing building and adding on? Or is it that it's a separate building but on that property?
Both option.
Both options.
Whichever seems to be that makes the most sense. I do think there is some common use that could happen by having the buildings connected. I think there are times that there are no kids in that building and the seniors might be able to take advantage of something that's in that building. And likewise, there may be something we can put in the new building that the youth don't have access to right now. For instance, there's not really a usable kitchen in the current building. There's a very small deal of kitchenette. And maybe a kitchen facility in a joint building might be something very useful. I just think something to consider.
Is it an issue because the football field and the Commodores are using that piece of land behind Gascanti?
Certainly the football field uses that. The baseball field does not nearly use nearly as much of that land that's right behind the community center.
In terms of, you know, the consideration, I think it might make sense to allow time, for example, for the rec committee to weigh in. I attended a meeting not too long ago about ideas for using the facility. And I think it would be important to look at that as part of the big picture.
So these are why I raise the question. Certainly, one of my major concerns remains the months of July and August where the community center is used quite heavily, almost as heavily as any other space in town. And it's a very busy intersection with Scranton Avenue when the Commodores are playing. You want to avoid that. Would that mean we'd be shutting down any possible senior center events if we're using the same? If so, that would be enough where we say, you know, we're carrying too much in there. But I still feel it's important to, because we've been encouraged to raise the question.
I'm going to forget what I was going to say. But I think, and one thing we have not discussed at this board yet is really the kind of programs that the senior center already offers. I mean, we've seen the list of all of that, but just have a discussion about it. And, you know, what are they? What are the programs that are really important to seniors? Because that's what I hear in the street. I love these programs. Could they be done there? And in some cases, maybe some of the programs wouldn't have to be done necessarily at a senior center. They could be done somewhere else. But yet they'd be available to seniors. I just think it's important to consider the fact that one of the things we really need in this town is a very large meeting room, a large meeting room. We don't really have one. And with a kitchen. So that, and that's, any senior center needs a kitchen because there are times when you really want to provide food for programs that are being held. So, you know, that could possibly be done. And also just the important consideration that whatever we do, we would not want to create obsolescence during the week for the, for Gascanti. And maybe that there is some way that that could be done.
Ms. Moffitt?
Do we want to shift some discussion at the administration building?
Well, that's certainly within the question that we're already asking our consultant to give us more information on. And so that information will be coming back to us, we hope, in the next, either two weeks from now or three weeks from now, that we'll have more information.
But would it be a standalone building?
I think that's the question we had asked.
It would be, you'd have the administration building and then between that ball field and the back area.
The geographic location is part of one of the recommendations there. We've asked them to look at, say, really, where is the best site that might be able to allow the field to stay and still be able to get double access from Sandwich Road and from Route 28? And how could we get enough parking and everything there on that site without trying to make it one building joint?
Next question. Is there discussion or thought about not having it 20,000 square feet?
Well, certainly, and this is some of the questions that Ms. Flynn had about the programs, I think that's a question really for the building committee to look at as opposed to, I think, this group. The recommendation has been somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 square feet. And I think the building committee is going to, all the sites we're looking at can house either one. And it's okay. Really, what is it we need? What are the programs we want to have? Where can we house them? I think the idea of a larger meeting room, if you've ever been to the senior center meals that they have there, they're cramming as many people in to two different rooms using a tiny kitchen. And boy, is there a huge demand for more space and a bigger kitchen area, even just for those events.
I was going to say, too, that, oh, about the programs, that seniors are the, because this is, we're building for the future. And seniors in the future are going to be a lot more mobile, I think, than the seniors of today, just because that's the way the population is evolving, I guess, is that people are more mobile. But there are those who will not be mobile. And programs and resources have to be available so that whether sometimes maybe some of the funding could be for transportation for people who cannot get there on their own. So, I mean, you have to consider all segments of the population and their ability to be able to access the programs, whether they can get there on their own or whether they need assistance in getting there, which I think, which in one way, I think, is sort of a positive for Main Street because of transportation. Some people might be able to take transportation on their own and some would have to have transportation provided. But I think there's a lot of interesting concepts there when we look at the future that are different from the past. And it's interesting to see what other towns are doing, too, around the Cape. It'll be interesting to see what Dennis does with their proposal, which is like a Taj Mahal that they're planning. But I think their town meeting is tomorrow, so it'll be interesting to see how that turns out.
Is anyone in the public who'd like to talk about Gascanti? Mr. Vera?
Hi, Jim Vera. Just quickly, if it would be helpful to you, we could reconvene the working group just so that we could put together our information that we used and the reasoning that we didn't put it on the recommended list. And you may find that helpful in your decision making.
Absolutely.
And we could get together just for that specific thing.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
My name is Mary Bishop. I live in T-Ticket. Good evening. I was away for the winter, so I didn't really have the input for the senior center. And of course, I am over there. I do volunteer there and I'm on the friends. And I'm also a board member of the T-Ticket Civic Association. So we attended meetings for the public. And I know that the school administration building was one that was on the list. I know that that is a historic building. So of course, if that was considered, you know, there's going to be a lot of rules and regulations that's going to really throw it out of whack as far as the cost. And of course, if anybody lived in T-Ticket like I have over 50 years, traffic is the main concern in T-Ticket. I think the seniors would have a very difficult time. I don't care what road you're coming in on. It's difficult. And for the community center building, if you're going to be renovating that building, you know, you're going to have a lot of problems and a lot of cost. I mean, the high school, for one thing, you know, let's not go there. I don't think it's a good site. And at most of the meetings I went to, there is still a site at the high school that I think should be considered, which is right near the tennis courts. I know the girls' field hockey's there, but it could be moved with very little cost. You wouldn't need parking lots. You wouldn't need a road. And the cost would be much more minimal than what the other site was. So I hope to take that into consideration. Thank you.
And just so you know, the high school sites are very much still on our table. Those are the ones that we've asked the questions of the consultant. They're going to come back with some information to us on that. And so absolutely, those are still within our consideration.
You mentioned the consultant. When would he be getting back? Is there a timeframe for the report?
No, we've asked the consultant. We provided the scope that the board voted in the last meeting. And he's working with his own sub consultants to prepare a more formal scope of services that we will bring back to this board, which will outline the timeframe.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other discussion from the board? Okay. All right. Our next item is to interview a vote and appoint committee members for the Design Review Committee. We have a number of openings, but we have one applicant. This is Meredith Honeybell. If you'd introduce yourself and explain why you'd like to be on this committee. And we may need to get you some more members before we have enough to actually to hold a meeting.
My name is Meredith Honeybell. I live on Sunset Road. And I've been in, living in Falmouth continuously about six years. And for the past two years, I've been working for Jill Newbauer Architects. And it's in that context that I became interested in and aware of some of the issues surrounding design review. I am not an architect or a design professional. I'm an administrator. But there was a recent meeting of some Falmouth architects discussing things related to architectural advocacy in Falmouth and ways that design professionals could be of assistance in improving and working to support the built environment. And the topic of the Design Review Committee came up and it's somewhat misnomer in terms of how it's been operating recently in that it's really maybe formally being, moving toward becoming the Sign Review Committee. And in hearing the scope of that committee, I thought that was perhaps a smaller bite that I might feel comfortable participating in. I have a longstanding volunteer record, not at the municipal level. My daughter's off at college. I have a little bit of time. This seemed like a reasonable amount to bite off that I could maintain a commitment to. And in working at the architect's office, I felt like I had a good group of support for questions that might come up that I needed to be enlightened on. So I do know that the committee is thin or nonexistent. But I believe that from this meeting that we recently had, there is some other interest and you'll probably be getting some other applications soon so that it can become operating again. I guess that's...
Questions from the board? Are you good at twisting other people's arms to get them to come and join you? That would be the first job you're going to have.
Well, let's just put a, I have Jill Newbauer helping in that regard. And we do have a couple of people that have expressed interest, but timing wise, they just haven't gotten their paperwork in yet. So I do think there's some...
Ms. Moffitt?
I was the liaison from the selectmen to the design review.
Okay.
And I certainly appreciated and understood exactly their purpose. And as you look at Falmouth, a lot of people will describe it in their feelings or emotions. But one thing, when it goes astray, is when you have the most horrible signs selling everything. And the design review has really held that tight. And they had a very mathematical way in deciding the height and the width and exactly how it should be. So there's an awfully lot of information. But the two main characters have both retired and they've been there for years. So it seems to be kind of a clean slate that maybe you would be the one with another, there's still a couple of people that are there that understand it. But it's a very necessary board in just keeping the look of the town the same regardless of what end of town you were in. So I really hope we get enough people to keep that going. And I think you would really enjoy it if you kind of liked math a little bit and designing a few things.
Yes, well, I have, I'm a systems analyst by nature and by previous profession. So I think that one of the things that I bring to this is an ability to look at, for example, bylaws and code, even though I don't have that background in this particular area, but interpret it, apply it fairly, and certainly, you know, with those things in mind and some recent, you know, not so great examples of signs. And I lost my train of thought.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
Any other questions?
Well, I move that we appoint Meredith Honeybell to the Design Review Committee position ending June 30th of 2018.
Second, for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next item is to vote to select the Falmouth Housing Corporation and affirmative investments for the Spring Bars Road community and housing development, and authorize the town manager to issue a notice of award subject to land development agreement and lease agreement. And the recommendation from the committee to Mr. Sussa and then to Mr. Sussa to our board is that this is the best choice for this project. Any discussion?
Well, Justin, this is the culmination of a lot of effort on the part of the board and the housing group and everyone else. So I think this kind of, the vote tonight is, just sets it into motion.
Exactly.
I did appreciate the way the debate went at town meeting where there was some give and take and concerns were raised and then some of them were answered. And a compromise was worked out that I really think does allow this project to move forward with the support of the people where this project is going to be happening.
And respects the history.
Maybe I might mention, because I've had some discussion with some of the Falmouth Housing Corporation individuals, and they've actually reached out to the T-Ticket Civic Association. And basically, you pretty much have a consensus on that, you know, what town meeting came up with was acceptable. And they're fine to see this project move forward. That's the message. But they proactively reached out because they didn't want hard feelings to continue. So I, I'm somewhat optimistic that things are going to move off on a good footing.
In which case, I will make a motion that the board vote to select Falmouth Housing Corporation affirmative investments as the most responsive and responsible party submitting a proposal for the Spring Bars Road community housing development. Authorize the town manager to issue a notice of award to Falmouth Housing Corporation affirmative investments, subject to execution of a land development agreement and lease agreement upon terms in the best interest of the town of Falmouth, and authorize the town manager to negotiate the terms of a land development agreement and lease agreement.
Motion second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the ayes have it. Next item is a request for a fee waiver from the John Wesley United Methodist Church. Remind the board that we have a policy that allows us to grant a fee waiver with the exception of the first and last day of recurring events. And we can grant a waiver up to 75% of the fee. And it was a $100, it was a $100 fee, right?
That's 75 dollars.
75 dollar fee.
Per day.
Right. Per day.
Rebecca Mancelli, pastor of the John Wesley United Methodist Church. And again, I just want to say thank you very much for your approval and support to move forward with this. A lot of happy faces on Sunday to make this happen. And I'm here tonight just to request the waiver of the fees for a few reasons. One, based on some of the things that even you have talked about, the broad community appeal of the event. And certainly, we had several people in the town of Falmouth and surrounding towns and even surrounding states that attended the service. Part of it was, is there public disruption? No. We get in and out of that parking lot before anyone comes in to use the beach on that morning. And is there a cost to the town? No, we just use the parking lot, the beach. The beach attendant is already there to open the gates, so there is no additional fees to the town for that. In addition, we know, and I've mentioned this several times last year, too, just the ways in which our church reaches out to the community, opens our building to the community, and offers monies in various ways. And just as an example, one of the most recent ones, this past winter, as you know, part of dealing with the homeless program on the Cape is the Belonging to Each Other, which was kind of a consortium of different churches and people in the community. And John Wesley gave over $1,700 to, you know, housing the homeless on the streets of Falmouth. And so, you know, I mean, I realize you have the policy. Ideally, I would like to have the fees waived totally, just because I feel like any monies that we give to the town is just going to be less than we can give to the people of the town in some of our ministries. But I just am here to ask for whatever I might be able to get.
Well, I guess, I want to say that I think if we were to ever give waivers, I think giving a waiver to people who are part of our faith community. And the whole purpose of going there is for the people to, as an alternative to their place of worship. That's really what it is. And as a coastal community that has these advantages, I think if places of worship and pastors and their congregations were... and pastors and their, their congregations want to use these spaces for that purpose, I think that's a very fine thing. And, and I just think that we should just do it. So I would make a motion. I'm gonna put the motion on the floor, and I would move to approve the waiver for the Wesley Methodist Church.
So instead of the $600 that would be normal, it'd be the $262.50?
Whatever the numbers come out to, yes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I'll have further discussion. I'm on the other side completely. I think there is a point that when you start anything that possibly doesn't follow all of the thoughts that I think that should happen in Falmouth, one is our beaches. And I think the thing about our beaches is the fact that most people coming into Falmouth wanna go to the beach. I think when you start to mix any group that says, I'd like to use it for half an hour or an hour, I'd like to do it once a week, and then turns around and says, but I would like for you not to charge me the fee, there's two things that bother me about this. I think it is opening a door to many situations that many people would take a look at and say, well, you agreed with having a church service on Sunday mornings, and you agreed also that they didn't have to pay the full fee. There's a reason why there are certain restrictions to our beaches, and there's a reason why we have fees. So anybody who wants to use our beach at any time could say, well, you've set the precedent for that. If anybody wants to have their fees negated, well, you've set the policy for that. Now, there isn't anything wrong with a, whoever it might be, that it's not in an organized way and that it's not coming from a religious background. So my vote would be that I would not allow a waiver of the fee, and I disagree with the use of the beaches for religious purposes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yeah. Well, I wanna just restate the fact that, you know, I really respect the John Wesley United Methodist Church for the services they give the community, as well as a number of other churches in town. You know, the fact that there are AA meetings there, there's, I know the Falmouth Eat Together meets at the John Wesley. I know you, Rebecca, actually serve as a chaplain for our police department. These are services that aren't just given to the members of that congregation, but to other members of this community. And, and I respect that kind of service that's given. So I, I think it's kinda like how we look at the schools. We need to make some accommodations for the fact that these services are valuable contributions to this community, and I support the, as I've already seconded it, but support giving that 75% discount.
Sure. I just, um, you know, I'm, I'm just really applying this situation to the rule that we've, you know, we've kinda updated. And it's, the eligibility depends upon providing.
This is not the special.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. But I'm, maybe I have, I'm reading the wrong particular parts. But it does, she is offering a public benefit.
Sure.
That's what I'm focused on. The, you know, and your mention of, you know, the, the church's participation and giving to the homeless, I think is something that really is something that grows beyond the fee requirements. And so for that reason, I would be supportive.
On Ms. Moffett's point about Santa Preston, where we still, I think, have some safety is that our policy says the board will consider the cost of the maintenance of the facility. And I don't see that this project is costing us any more to do than the general maintenance of, of the beaches. The public benefit of the event, and this is where I agree, that I think there is a public benefit, and the public disruption caused by the event. And I don't see public disruption caused. I think some of the other things that could be proposed might not fit those three criteria, at which point we'd say, well, we set the precedent based on those things, and if other things fit that criteria, then I'm gonna be okay with those two. But I think it's gonna be very hard to come up with other things that are at a time of the day where it's not gonna disrupt the public. This is at 7:45 to 8:30 in the morning, at a time when the beach isn't used heavily. And so we're not disrupting a lot of people. There's nothing that the town has to do that's gonna cost us any money. And I do think there is a public benefit, so.
And that's the floodgate prevention, just exactly what you're saying.
Any further discussion? We have a second, a motion and a second. Instead of the $600, it'd be $262.50. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Cast is four to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is discussion of the town manager merit pay raise and possible contract extension. You received some information both from Denise Cohen on a salary survey of other towns on Cape Cod where their town managers. And upon the request of Ms. Moran, Mr. Suso also highlighted some things that have happened in the past year or two. And just so you know, that was on request, not coming up from himself, but he came forward with that. Ms. Moran?
I think I'd like to just start the discussion by the, just mentioning a few of the items. I don't know that the public would otherwise be aware. But at, at the spurring of, and leadership of the town manager, there was replacement for the West Falmouth Fire Station. He worked very closely with the West Falmouth Village Association. And there was a new Pierce fire truck that was costing about $600,000. And it was a very comparable gently-used, stuff-and-replacement engine that was used and acquired for $25,000. So that in and of itself is a swing of, I mean, you're better at math than I am, about 575.
Right on that.
Off the top of my head. And I, I, because I, I, when we were presented with the review of a contract, I wanted to know, in addition to, you know, making sure our town manager is on par with similar communities, you know, it's also based upon individual efforts. And, you know, over the, I've been here for two years, so I have a certainly direct information on, on some of those efforts. But I really wanted a compilation. Also, most recently, with the firefighters' union, there was a savings of about over $10,000 in additional labor costs, which had been previously incurred with past public safety binding arbitration process, because in this case, there was a settlement with the fire union, and that was the first in over 15 years. So that's another specific accomplishment that really goes to the bottom line. With respect to the police officers' union and the work that was done there, there was an enhancement in public safety without the need to supplement the annual budget by about $300,000. And so these, these are, you know, specific instances of empirical evidence that I thought the board might want an opportunity to review. And then the accountant's, you know, report that we heard earlier, that the, the town's bond rating was AA2 at Moody's and AA+ standard in pores, with the removal of a previously existing negative outlook. And that was as a result of the town manager's decision to hire Jennifer Petit, who's the financial director of the town. So those, those are just a few things I just thought the board should have available for consideration. That's why I asked for the report.
Ms. Patterson?
And I fully agree with the positive review that we've given Julianne and his work. I do have some cautions, though, that I wanna throw out. And it has to really do with some contractual issues and the potential for escalation, if you will, much as we've seen in executive salaries, you know, in the commercial world. I have to say that 16 years on the school committee and negotiating four superintendent contracts, I've never seen one that had a cost of love-liv, cost-of-living adjustment as part of the contract. And I found that to be quite unusual. And I've never seen it in my 17 years in the private world or in my academic trading, having a master's degree in organization management. So that made me look a little bit further. And I, something I noted that, and this is the contract, not Julianne's lease, but that cost of living is set as basically equaling what the cost of living adjustment is given for the department heads. And I feel like that's a kind of a built-in conflict of interest, and I think we really ought to ask the attorney general to look at it, because Julianne, along with Vice from our finance director, would set that cost of living adjustment for the department heads. And then that would come right back to him as a cost of living adjustment per his contract. And I'm just not sure that that is the way things ought to be structured. So I raise that question for us to pursue. I don't know how we reached that, those terms, but it bothers me a bit. I wanna point out that, again, in the way of making sure that we don't overly escalate the costs associated with the compensation package for any town manager, there's a, a 5% contribution to a retirement plan, supplemental retirement plan that's in addition to the normal Massachusetts retirement plan for any employee. And, you know, as salaries go up, it's always that last three or five years of the salary that determine what those benefits are gonna be. And so escalating salary costs end up, you know, being a benefit. And then the, the last thing, I think, is to recognize that anybody who's coming on in a fairly junior level, or perhaps in a non-executive level, has a salary and there's a percentage increase due to a cost-of-living adjustment, well, the absolute increase is pretty small. But somebody who's pretty high up in salary, when there's a percentage increase, that ends up being a larger absolute value. And so you get this rich-getting richer, poor-getting poorer phenomenon. I think that we need to be watching as part of reviewing this. Superintendent contracts that we've always negotiated have always had essentially a merit increase only, not a automatic built-in cost-of-living adjustment. And so I would like us, now that I'm aware of it, because I was given a copy of the contract, to really kinda go back and scrutinize that and perhaps get some, an, an opinion from the attorney general's office as to whether this represents a built-in structural conflict of interest situation. I know when I decided to go back into teaching, I was on the school committee here in Falmouth, and I was advised that I could not seek a teaching position within the town of Falmouth, because that is a conflict of interest per the state regulations. So I was, was not an issue for me. I found a position outside of the town. But I wanted to be on the school committee and continue to serve in that capacity. And so I was, and the reason, rationale I was told was because you, you'd be voting on your own salary increase. And this, you know, rings of the same sort of contractual situation if, in fact, you're giving somebody a cost-of-living increase, and that in turn is exactly the same cost-of-living adjustment that you're gonna get. So I, I just wanna raise that as issues that I spotted in going through the contract. I'm ready to reward Julianne for his fine work. I am worried about what the situation that we may actually have gotten ourselves into inadvertently without necessarily having soft-like kind of, of advice and counsel from somebody, you know, that's familiar with executive contracts. I'll mention that just in.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify that a moment if I may? And Selectman Patterson raised an important issue, which I respect and appreciate. Just wanted to mention that the contract to which we're referring is based on the standard model in the entire Commonwealth developed through the Massachusetts Municipal Managers' Association. What the, the board has in terms of my contract is not unique, but based strictly on that model, and I'll be happy to share a copy of that model with members of the board. So the cost-of-living section is fairly common, and I think you'll see it in the standard contract, but I'm happy to share that. I think you'll see that sections are commonplace in, in others, again, based on the model that the state's presented.
What is the percentage of the cost of living?
2.5. Is it 2.5%?
Two percent.
Two and a half percent.
It was 1.5% in the past year, 2% in the year to come.
Oh, 2%.
2% in the year to come.
Beginning July 1.
And the last time you received one?
1.5%.
I'm talking to you directly. Excuse me, what year?
Well, Ju- July 1 of the past fiscal year. Last July 1, 2015.
So what does 2.5% represent in dollars and cents?
2%.
2%.
2%.
Can it be 2.5%?
We can't change the cost of living.
Isn't it the contract?
Can't change that 2.5%?
We can change.
We can give a merit increase over that.
That's, I, okay. Can the whole thing be a merit?
Not in the con, we can't change the cost of living piece already. It's already in the contract. We can increase the 2% to something more. I don't think we can put a negative merit pay and reduce it, though.
I'm not suggesting.
Can I? I just wanna switch gears just a little bit, and I, I think, you know, part of the analysis in terms of goals, you know, that's really where this all started, what goals, you know, do the selectmen lay out, having listened to the town? And then what goals are achieved and, and, you know, the, over, you know, and that's reviewed yearly. So I think, you know, what might make sense would be, 'cause I, I think there's general agreement based upon the review of a merit raise. I think it should be discussed that the merit raise be tied to the evaluation. For example, you know, there's a, if you look at a 1% might be available if the, if the evaluation is, let's say, you know, 7. And then a 2% might be available if it's above that, or 8, or, you know, above that. So I'm just, I'm trying to think about a, a standard that might tie into the, the evaluation so it, it, it kind of makes sense.
Before I would agree to that, I think we need to take another look at the scale that we use. You know, Doug had suggested that scale, but I found that that scale biases it toward a higher numerical rating, and it was not a linear. So I think we gotta be really careful about how we create that scale and how we give a numerical weighting to the various categories. So I would want us to go back and review that before we use this past evaluation technique. It definitely was skewed toward giving a higher point score than something that was a little bit more flat and linear across the, if you will, the qualitative scale that was previously used.
Yeah, I would feel very comfortable using a numerical scale to equate to a percentage increase. I'd rather have us look at the overall evaluation, saying, as a group, the evaluation is very clear and very positive, and would just in, in overall reading of it, don't worry about the numbers, would indicate a merit pay would be, a merit increase would be called for.
Which would resolve sales.
Yeah. And the question is, what percentage would a merit increase be? Would it be a specific amount, or would it be a percentage?
I would, I mean, I would, it's, I would start with a percentage, and then that creates a specific amount.
Right.
And the question is whether, I think, I would hope that we would be discussing whether we're gonna offer a 1% or 2%, whether it's around $1,700 or $3,350.
That 1% would be about $1,700.
And 2% would be about $3,400.
Well, I'm gonna weigh in and say, I would have to consider the cost-of-living increase along with any merit value. I just cannot divorce the two in the case of an executive position. You're a professional, your power is really through leveraging the people. You're a manager of managers, and those managers leverage more people. And so it's a different kind of position than being somebody who has a job, you know, I've, I've basically only managed engineers, professional people, and it's the same sort of thing. You know, I, I knew that my productivity was based on my constituents' productivity. And that's a different kind of role. I got paid more as a result of that, right? My influence over the success of an organization was greater. But, but I didn't necessarily get a certain percentage every year, you know? And I, I think we need to look at those executive positions and say, yes, okay, if we're gonna give a certain cost of living, we need to look at that and add whether we think there should be something additional. But the whole thing should be viewed as a merit increase. If the contract says cost-of-living increase, okay, I'll buy that. But I think we should look at the entire percentage increase and not just say, based on the review, that's where the merit comes in, solely based on the review. I think it needs to be seen as both merit and cost-of-living increase.
Well, I'm very comfortable saying, given his record, that if we wanna say the cost of living was 2 and the merit is 1, that he's getting a 3% increase. And whether we're even saying, actually, we're thinking of it as a 3% merit increase. Either way, I'm very comfortable with that. Either way, I'm very comfortable with that as a, as a recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Three percent?
Well, it's a one percent.
One plus two.
Above the cost of living that's already in this contract.
And the two.
Yeah.
Right. Motion second for the discussion? A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Second question is that his contract, right now is expected to end in 2019, I believe November 2019? And do we want to consider an extension of a year to November 2020 at this time? Or do we want to wait until, we're going to be doing another evaluation, or three of us will be doing an evaluation in November?
November, yeah.
Mr. Patterson?
Well, I, this is the first time I've seen a five year contract too. In all the superintendent's contracts, we've always been, we've limited it to three years. And I feel like we need to protect our citizens. We see in the newspapers about towns, superintendents, town managers that get into a situation and the town decides they want a different town, they want a different manager or a different superintendent. And when you go through the litigation, typically what happens, you know, you end up having to pay them most or if not all of the salary that the contract would have yielded had they actually stayed in the contract to its end. I feel like we owe it to the town to basically kind of keep something closer to a three year commitment and not the full five year commitment. So I would be in favor of delaying this until next year and then extending it. I would, I'd like the idea of keeping a nice comfortable security level for our town manager. I don't want to keep them going year to year, but I think three years is a better comfort level for me in terms of making commitments on behalf of the citizens of the town.
Well, I understand where you're coming from and that's always an issue with a town manager's contract, should it be three years, should it be five years? The only trouble is if you really want to get qualified town manager, trying to get a town manager with a three year contract is really difficult, especially on Cape Cod because the person has to make a huge commitment to leave wherever they are, find living space here on the Cape and make a commitment and a three years is a very short period of time for a manager. So built into the, so you, if you go, when you go five years like this one is, because I happened to be on the board when this contract was negotiated, is, is that there are, there are places in the contract, there are areas where you can negotiate a separation if you need to and it's very clear how you do it. And you could do it anytime within the five years and it's all laid out in the contract how you do it. And that's why you can go five years because you're not impeded in any way and you don't have to go through all of these long negotiations about how much is it going to cost me to have you leave? That's all fairly clear, those are spelled out in the contract. So that's.
I feel very comfortable asking the merit pay question for this board that's worked with Mr. Sussa for quite a few years. I feel more comfortable waiting for, because we're going to try to do the evaluation every October, when we're going to have a new board that will have two new members who will be working in the future to actually ask that question at that time.
You're right, it's better to do it now with people who've been working with them.
But the extension would be more for the future and have them.
Oh, I see. When does the contract expire?
Not till November 2018.
Oh, eighteen.
Nineteen. Possibility of a one year extension to 2020.
I had a view closer to Pat's in the sense of that this might be a more proper time to consider an extension for all the reasons that she mentioned with also stepping back and maybe the board also thinking about in terms of a task for the new board to look at, is the town manager system the right system for the town? Is it, you know, there are other models, you know, whether it's a mayor or, you know, I think maybe that's, in the five years, I think we would need that to do that review just the same as we're doing the review for town council. So that, you know, that's something that, you know, just maybe deserves some discussion going forward with the new board, but I'm, I'm more comfortable, go ahead.
I was going to say, that's really a charter question?
Right.
Yeah, so you'd have to, you'd have to decide if you want to create a charter review committee again. And I know the bylaws do specify, I think it's, what is it, every five years or something?
We're about there.
Yeah. And we must be about there.
Okay, so we're saying that the contract expires in 2019.
Right.
And, and we're at sixteen, so that's.
October is 2018.
October of 2019.
Yep.
So if you did five years, you would be up to October of 2021.
The discussion just is really as a one year extension from ending October 2018 to ending October 2020.
And that would intersect with the charter review?
Right, 2019, ending October 2019, a one year extension to October 2020. Mr. Patterson?
I just wanted to respond to Pat's comment about providing a kind of a longer term commitment to recruit qualified town managers. But once you've got them on the job, they've made that transition, they've come here, I don't think you need to hold, you know, have a five year kind of assurance, if you will, to keep them, you know, staying and loyal to the town. Besides, I think most professionals, once they've arrived and start to work, if they're the kind of quality people we want, they're going to be working hard for the benefit of the town throughout that period of time. I'm just, like I said, I just feel like we should try to keep a little bit shorter window, if you will, for the, for the contract because we may decide that we want to change the contract for some reason. I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure that, you know, a cost of living increase that's based on another cost of living increase that the manager actually establishes is, isn't, you know, a conflict of interest. It's supposed to, we need to change that. Now we're going to have to renegotiate and I think we need to, you know, keep ourselves more limited in terms of our commitment. That's all I'm saying.
So we've had some good discussion?
I'm going to make a motion to extend the contract for 12 months.
So to end up to October 31st, 2020.
Correct.
We have that motion?
Seventeen.
Motion second, so be adding one year to the contract?
One year.
Okay, any further discussion?
Why are we doing this? I'm just curious because, you know, I mean, it's three years already, right? It's currently, this is sixteen and it's nineteen.
So it's three and a half years from right now and let's make it four and a half years from right now.
Yeah. I'm just curious as to why we would do that. I mean, three and a half years is a long time.
Right, stability.
And the year from now or two years from now, you could extend it, but why now? And maybe because of this board?
It is just standard within the contract that add evaluation time to consider both merit pays and contract extensions. And so it's more pro forma that, do we want to extend it right now? And we could say, no, actually not right now. We'll reconsider either, and we will be doing another evaluation in October and every October after that we'll be having another chance to ask this question again and determine it.
I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just curious as to why we're doing it.
The reason I'm making the motion is I think that, you know, in terms of stability, it would intersect well with the charter review of, is this, is this working for the town? I just think it's, you know, it's, it's a good time for us to review and that that would be the proper intersection.
Okay.
All right, ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Three to two. It passed. Next item is a sign variance, off premises sign, Molly's parking.
I'm here for, I think this is the twentieth time.
Where is your son tonight?
Oh, playing cards.
Because he's usually here.
Any questions from Ms. Campbell on the sign variance?
No. No. A motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Eyes have it.
Good luck.
Next item is a sign variance, off premises sign for Bikram Yoga in Falmouth.
Yes.
If you'd come and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Kate Riddle, owner of Bikram Yoga Falmouth.
And you're hoping to.
We just have a sign, we put it out for two seven day periods, one thirty day period during the year and I already allotted myself those times, but now I've got to have it out because of the road work going on because people can't see where, where we are and they're being diverted down Maravista instead of allowed to go to Driftwood Plaza. So if the sign's out on the road, they can see it and tell the police officer, you know, that's where they're trying to get. Most of the people know where we are, but we do have new people coming in every day. At least it would help to get people to come in. So I just, I've used two of my seven day permits already and then I'd just like another permit to extend to the end of the road construction. So depending on wherever the, the road closures are, at least I can have that sign out on the road.
Is there a timeframe that you'd like to keep a sign out there, like a month or sixty days?
Yeah, it's actually, I'm sorry, I think it was like thirty-seven days to, or, from now until the end of the Memorial Day weekend when he says it was going to be done on 28th.
The 28th of May.
And you're interested in all three of these requests?
Yes.
The thirty-seven and the seven day and the other seven day?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I would have used my seven days, you know, on the other dates, but I just used them for the last two weeks.
And the time of the day, is it going to be out there 24 hours a day or?
Yes, yes, it usually is. I usually get that permit.
Ms. Moffitt?
I go by your place frequently and I would say, I don't know what happens with design review, but she does need to have more coverage because she's on a side. So as you're coming down 28A, you turn in and the building is on the side, so you don't see anything out on the road. And she really, and then I think your name is in with the group.
It is, yeah.
But you need, you have an orange sign out there right now.
Yes.
That need, in my mind, for her business to be successful, that orange sign needs to be there all the time. It's attractive, it fits in, its size is correct, there isn't anything obnoxious about it. And the, the only reason I thought, I mean, I looked at your days, thirty-seven and seven and then come back again and ask for more time. I just think where you have it right now is, is very good and it's out on the road so people can see it because of the construction, but my opinion is it should stay there and it shouldn't be seven days, seven days. It should just stay where it is right now.
Until?
Until the end of construction.
Well, as long.
End of construction?
No, no, nope. I think it should be, it should be showing out on that, where you have that, right at the end.
Well, that's not what the application is for.
Well, if I were her, I'd change it.
Since you raised precedent earlier, Ms. Moffitt, I guess, I'm wondering, why wouldn't the other eight businesses who are on that Driftwood Plaza side saying, hey, what about us? Why can't we have a purple one and a green one and each one of those businesses saying, I want, I guess I would worry that if we're setting precedent that this business can, why can't Duncan Doan's pull it out?
I think there's one more, isn't there?
Well, there's, just to defend her point, our businesses face the north, I think the other ones face the road, so they can't really see it. You only can see it if you're driving towards Main Street. But there's another one next to us then, but really I just needed the permits for then. But I would keep it out all the time if you want me to.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve it as requested.
Okay. The only thing I want to change on the request is the date on number two says on the printed form we have is eight fifteen to two twenty-one. I think it'd be eight fifteen to eight twenty-one.
Oh, sorry.
As a second seventy-one.
Just a typo, right. Good point.
Thanks.
So it says thirty-seven day permit from basically now until June 1st and then August 15th, August 21st and November 21st and November 27th.
Right.
So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the eyes have it.
I'll rethink the.
I know where it is.
Next is a sign variance in the Laclede Congregational Church. We only allow two per night, so let's just.
Sorry.
So we've already done all of them?
Just to prove it by default. All right, Mr. Ginder, if you'd explain to us what your sign is.
Okay. We've been working on a new sign for the Laclede Congregational Church. In the packet you have a picture of what the old sign is, which is about to fall down and we put together a new thing. The new, it's carved in red cedar and then there's a carved gold leaf shell at the top, but yours is black and white, so you lose the full effect of what it looks like in living color. And the only exception is down here, we have the name of the minister and this we hope lasts 20 or 30 years. Even though we love our minister, we don't think she's going to last 20 or 30 years. So this is just a black painted sign and we put it in below rather than working it into the body of the sign. Well, we went through all this, we've gone through the historical review process, they approved it subject to zoning compliance. And with that little sign underneath, we're slightly over, the 16 square feet were allowed by, I don't know, maybe a square foot. So we're here to ask for a variance to allow the additional space and they had additional sign on the bottom that says Reverend Nell Fields.
Any questions?
Did anyone consider a monarch butterfly instead of the shell?
I think the seashell's easier to carve.
Oh, okay. All right then.
I move to approve.
By the way, do you need some monarch, do you need some sunflower or put some?
I have one.
No, please see.
I did just recently get some, thank you. I'll second the motion.
And a second? Any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
The next item, we received a letter from the owners of the Captain Tom Lawrence, Captain Tom Lawrence House Inn, this is on Palmer Avenue, Barloco Street rather, next to where the current Tedeskes is. Tedeskes has sold the store to 7-Eleven and 7-Eleven's planning on running it more their hours than Tedeskes. Tedeskes usually is closed at 10 o'clock. And the owners of the Bed and Breakfast have asked us to weigh in if we can to ask them to stick to hours that are more for a residential area than for a business area. And so I bring it to your, for your consideration as to how you'd like me to proceed.
Well, I think, I think he's right.
I think he is too. I think it is a residential area and those can be very busy places in the middle of the night. I mean, just look at Main Street. But if that's different, there are no residences around the one at Main Street, but I think it's important to keep the, you know, and then you have all the apartments across the street. I just think it's more appropriate to have the hours be suited to the neighborhood and not just to another store.
We have no jurisdiction over this whatsoever, so.
Over this time?
No, over.
I'm sorry.
Over the hours.
We don't?
No.
Does anyone?
Why is that?
Does anyone have jurisdiction over this?
No?
This would be a voluntary request on the part of the board for a new owner to collaboratively work with you.
I mean, it's a district, it's a district.
It's only alcohol that we could, hours we can restore.
Entertainment.
I, I agree with sending a neighborly letter or, you know, just with respect to, in consideration of the neighborhood, that they keep the same hours that the Tedeske had.
I'll second, I mean, that's a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, and may I say that, you know, it really may be in their business interest because they have to staff this if they're going to stay open 24 hours. And maybe this isn't all they need to say, you know, realistically, are we going to have enough business to pay for the staff that we're going to have to pay for? So I, I would even suggest to them that the level of business there is not likely to warrant and may very well be in your best interest to keep it open for the hours that were previously used for that place that was plunged.
Are these new owners? No?
Yes.
No, were they new owners? I'm talking about the Tedeske.
Yeah, 7-Eleven is going to be buying from Tedeske, so, yeah.
Yeah, a different company.
Seven Eleven is the hours, Tedeske's the name of the store.
Right. I certainly am okay with sending the letter. It is a little bit hard to argue that it's a residential area when it is next to Woodlumber, when beyond that we do have a bed, another bed and breakfast, and then we have a little strip mall. It is one of our busiest streets to get down to its whole. So it's a business, it is zone business, it isn't zone residence.
No. But there are no businesses that operate after six p.m.
Right. And the other issue I do have, at least I'm willing to support this, is the kind of business that Seven-Eleven is going to have at two or three o'clock in the morning is not appropriate next to a bed and breakfast, is not appropriate next to a nursing home, is not appropriate next to a lawyer's office, which is what's next door. And I just, the truth of the matter is, that's the kind of business that they're going to have at a convenience store like that, and I would just assume not having to be in that area. Ms. Moffitt?
I think they've been able, Captain Tom Lawrence, I think they've been able to keep that open, because they've had rather quiet neighborhoods, so to speak, even though it does have all that commercial business going on. And I think this is more of a threatening thing to their business to run it twenty-four hours. So I understand what he says, but if there's, we don't have any say in it other than to write a gentleman's letter and.
And there are a lot of residents around, regardless of the district it's in there, you know, there's certainly, it is somewhat of a bedroom community, so that's another thing to add, different way to put it.
I know how hard it was resisted when they went in there to begin with. It was a very, very hard fight to try to keep it from even being near because of the residential area. So we have a motion and a second to draft a letter, send a letter requesting that they maintain the hours of operation.
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Next, potential renewal of town leases. Ms. Harper, you want to lead us off on this one?
Sure. There are three properties, in fact, there are five or six leased properties to the town. There are three that are up for renewal or require some attention in the short term. They are the Emerald House, the Community Hall, and Water Street Woods Hole, and the Woods Hole Community School. They all are a little different. The Emerald House is a ten-year lease with a contemplated ten-year renewal with some unique terms related to rent, which requires some contribution to the free clinic. At the time we were looking at their property, there were competing bids and competing interests. In order to resolve that, there was a contribution made by the Emerald House, by the, excuse me, Falmouth Service Center, to the Cape Cod Free Clinic to help address that. The Woods Hole Community School is a direct lease with the Village Association and the Community Association, and that is up for renewal this June, end of the fiscal year, and that is also a ten-year renewal. Although those terms don't have any payment, there is a significant contribution to maintenance of the building, as with the Emerald House. The last one is the Community Hall, which is currently under a license agreement, which is revocable at any time. We'll need to do some sort of a process to either procurement, possibly even town meeting action to cure that. They all are in need of addressing. There are issues that Julian and I need some guidance from the board on relative to term. Are you interested in, in some cases, we've had requests for lesser terms, something less than the ten years, the rent, which in most cases is very limited, or payments for annual maintenance. And then the bigger issue I think we need to contemplate are the capital needs of these buildings, whether there's any long-term major investment that may be needed, such as roof repair, foundation work, those types of things that crap up, that there's no fund in place for any of them. And right now, they really are silent, and which means that the owner, being the town, has responsibility for those. So I'm looking for some guidance and feedback so that we can begin to have a dialogue with these owners about that.
Just before we begin, I just want to disclose that the program I work at during the summer is a tenant of the Woods Hole School.
I have a question on insurance. Is there an insurance required?
Oh, yeah, they're very thorough leases, yes.
There is that kind.
Credit indemnification there. All modern leases, with the exception of the Community Hall, which dates back to nineteen-eighty-nine, and then the license agreement was issued.
One of the, are the leases reviewed by council?
Yes, they're prepared by council.
Okay, that's all. Those were my basic questions.
So Heather, you're saying that there's no requirement on their part to do any major maintenance on the building?
In past terms, for example, the, I think it was the Community Hall, in fact, made a major investment in the property to their benefit, to the way that they use the building. But there is nothing existing right now in terms of the successor lease, what the expectations are, so I look to the board as to what your thoughts are in terms of capital repairs. Would you look to pass that responsibility on to the tenant? Is that something you think might be a shared responsibility, or something you have the town currently remain in responsibility for that? And I don't think you need to answer these questions tonight, we can bring this back in a future agenda.
Thank you. And maybe some advice from council too, in terms of that? What type of insurance? What should it be? And what is the, say, the current appraisal on the building? What value does that have? And then we look at the community benefit of the building and what through.
Remember, two of them, we're looking at a successor lease. The Emerald House and the Community School were both awarded with ten-year contracts with a ten-year renewal. So it really is, what are the renewal terms?
Okay.
I think, I'm comfortable that town council's going to help us with the insurance requirements. Those were done ten years ago.
We don't have to worry about them.
Yeah, it, really, the board guidance at this point is the term, the rent, and the capital repairs.
Well, I recall when town meeting approved the Emerald House when it was first available, because that was a big thing to use as a, what do you call it, a consignment.
Yes.
A consignment place. That was a really big thing, how that house was going to be used because it has historic value.
And I must add, they're all great tenants, they do a good job, the buildings are maintained well, but they are municipal assets that at some point may require investment. We need to think about this, this is the time to have the conversation.
Okay.
For instance, example, I know the Woods Hole School, within the work that's done there, there's about thirty thousand dollars that's put in maintenance, and another thirty-five thousand dollars that's put in capital improvements to the building and grounds itself. For instance, there was a tree that had to be taken down that the Woods Hole School group is paying for, that there are no, certainly the impression among the Woods Hole Community Station and Woods Hole School is the town is not responsible for doing any work on that building, that it's their responsibility. But maybe it needs to be worded in the lease.
I think we need to work on the language.
Yeah, I think that is the way it should be structured, and we ought to get that language in there. And I think the Lawrence Academy Building, where the chamber is, it ought to be similar. And I know, and Michael Casparian, I'm talking to him, he has that same expectation, that they're going to put a new roof on it when it's required. And, you know, when you're dealing with not-for-profit groups like this, usually you get a lot of volunteer help, or you get a lot of pro bono contributions from professional builders and that sort of thing. So I think they can get the work done, but, you know, if you're going to do an assessment on the building, I think looking at sort of long-term repair things like re-roofing ought to be included in terms of saying, look, you know, you've got probably ten years on this roof, and then you're going to have to think about replacing it. So at least everybody's on the same board as to what their expectations are.
Yeah, okay. And then the rent, currently they're all nominal to no rent.
Exactly.
And if that's the way that the board would like to proceed, I've worked with boards in the past that were looking to earn revenue from these, we want to make sure that these are consistent with the goals of the town.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I would say, I, I'm happy to provide these organizations with these kind of facilities. I think they give back to the town in so many different ways, and that includes the Lawrence Academy Building. So I think, you know, helping alleviate the need for a capital investment for them to create a facility of their own is a contribution we can make. But then the maintenance of that building after that is their responsibility.
So the last question, I think, is, and thank you for the back and forth, is the term. Are you, in the, in one of them particularly, the term is expressly noted as a ten-year renewal. I'll have to work with council to determine whether we can actually do less, but my guess is we probably can do less but no more. Is the board willing to do less than the ten-year term?
You mean like five with a five-year renewal? Is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah.
I'd be okay with that.
I think a ten, if they're accustomed to a ten-year lease, that's what they've been doing, or is it just, is that what they're accustomed to?
Right now, it's structured as a ten-year with a ten-year renewal. But there's one that's looking, without getting into details, there's one that's looking for less than the ten years.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would have been guessing, is they don't want to make a longer-term commitment, or don't want to make a ten-year commitment anymore.
There may be some organizational changes that they're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the term depends in part upon the commitment to participate or pay for capital improvements.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, if there's, you know, a question, you know, looks like a new roof is going to be needed in ten years, and the, you know, the lease is only for five, then the town's going to get stuck with the capital improvement. So it's all interrelated. I don't think we can really look at it individually.
I think if they're willing to take on all the maintenance and capital improvements and a ten-year lease, I think that's.
Right, that would be ideal, sure.
I agree.
Sure.
Sounds good.
But Heather, are you asking whether we'd be willing to do a five-year lease for one of these facilities?
If the board's willing to entertain a lesser term?
I don't think so. We'd need more facts.
Yeah, I think so.
I think we need a lot more information.
Nothing entertained.
Yeah.
Ten years better.
I would say so.
Longer's better, right.
Right, just, and dealing with the capital improvements, that just seems to be, to go together.
I don't think we need to vote on any of this, right?
No, it's great. Most appreciated.
Just guidance.
Okay.
Next, we have some seasonal license renewals. We have Bowling Alley, Ryan Family Museums, twenty-three Town Hall Square, Common Vixual Seasonal License, the Fowlclam Check, at two-twenty-seven Clinton Avenue, and Smitty's Homemade Ice Cream at three-twenty-six East Thomas Highway. We'll take those together, please.
Motion for, motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then we have in holders, Bailey's by the Sea, three-twenty-one Grand Avenue, the Captain's Manor Inn, twenty-seven Main Street, Elizabeth Hathon, one-sixty-five North Thomas Highway, Grandview Guesthouse, one-ninety-seven Grand Avenue, and Woods Hole Inn, twenty-eight Wander Street.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. It's a thirty-five dollar license. I think we need, maybe look into that, being raised a little bit. Same with the secondhand dealers, twenty-five dollar license. We have Consignment Classics, six-thirty-four North Thomas Highway, Fay's Gallery, five-fifty-six Main Street, finds of all kinds, six-sixty-one Main Street, and Hainoo's Jewelers at three-fifty-two Main Street.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Question?
Aye.
Question? On secondhand dealers with Hainoo's Jewelers? I've never seen anything.
It's probably estate jewelry.
Right. Estate jewelry, okay.
But to be able to sell it that they purchased, they have to have a license.
Okay.
In addition to their license.
Secondhand. And do we ever have any discussion about what is being sold, is honest goods in secondhand dealer shops?
Not within our license.
Is that a question for us?
Well, I mean, is there any, is there any thought, and you're giving someone a license, and is everything honest that's inside the door?
That would be an enforcement question, not at this point.
Well, you'll know I brought it up.
Yes, come on, let's come on.
Are you making an accusation?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
I'm making you think a lot more.
Close. The individual selectmen support.
Well, we were at Nobbska.
That's right.
And the chair, I thought, gave a very nice speech. I also thought the music was very festive. And I really appreciated, you know, Senator Bobbini de Macedo was there, and.
Congressman.
Exactly, Congressman Keating. And it was just a terrific event.
Long time coming.
And also, the main thing is, you know, for Catherine Bumpus and, you know, to have recognized this coming along, and, you know, the, all of the nonprofits putting in the work, Brian Nickerson, and this is, you know, this is really, once in our lifetime will we see this, you know, that Falmouth has taken this on as it should, and this iconic, fantastic opportunity, and it's going to be well-preserved, and all those folks that were, you know, that were involved should really be given great kudos, just the organization and the funding is coming together.
And the fact that there's a partnership, like museums on the Green and High Field Hall, they're all worked together, I think, on this, which is really great. And they were all there today too.
Cooperative, terrific.
Any other reports?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, along with Julian and Heather and Doug, we participated in that grinder pump maintenance working group meeting, and I thought it was a constructive meeting. You know, certainly the town is moving toward trying to help homeowners out with some of these potential maintenance issues, so I thought that was an effective way of helping people get together, hearing each other's sides, and trying to come up with a consensus on how we can move forward. I just wanted to mention that.
And they're meeting again tomorrow, right?
Correct, tomorrow, six-thirty.
Which may be the second-to-last meeting they need to have, if not the last meeting. I think they made a lot of progress in being able to come back to us with a report.
Another one that several of us participated in is the Department, DEP's Department of Environmental Protections hearing for the steamship authority that took place last week. I thought that was a useful hearing for them to get information from local residents, and that was, I think, a valuable thing to participate and listen to. Stop at that.
On that point, if I might, we received today a request for comment from Wayne Lamson on the review that the steamship did in terms of freight from New Bedford. And there wasn't a deadline. I'm just wondering if we were going to make a comment, or if the opportunity for comments was extended more widely, we might ask for a better deadline than Wayne's nice, you know, could you get this, if you're interested, can you get comments to me as soon as possible?
I'd be happy to explore that, perhaps could go on the board's next agenda.
Has the report come to our, into our office?
May have arrived today. We were.
It was emailed today.
Given the schedule we just described, I confess I'm behind on today's emails, so.
But yeah, that'd be great to get a deadline and to put on next agenda.
Great.
Mr. Sisso, town manager's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's already been noted, thank you, Selectman Patterson, on the, and I think, Mr. Chairman, grinder pump policy meeting, so we look, do look forward to sitting with that group again tomorrow evening, and we did make great progress, and look forward to bringing a recommendation to the board very soon. Also, pleased to convene, I think, Mr. Chairman, you referred to the Shellfish Aquaculture Working Group. That was last Thursday evening, as opposed to last Wednesday evening, for grinder pump, and we will be setting, that group will be meeting on a monthly basis, and their next meeting is Thursday, May nineteenth, and we will have, we anticipate an expansion to approximately a dozen or thirteen members with that group. Again, it's a, it's a temporary working group, and good progress was made on our initial meeting, including discussion of potential moratorium, as was mentioned by Chairman Jones. Also, we've put the finishing touches on the application to the CPC, and I thank Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper for her leadership in that regard, for funding consideration for the housing coordinator position. That application was due today and was transmitted as the board had authorized, I believe, on either the first or second night of town meeting, one or the other. I know that was in our minutes this evening. Also, as a reminder, to mark your calendars for a Selectmen's meeting on Monday, May sixteenth, so the board will be meeting both on the ninth and on the sixteenth in the month of May. The sixteenth is in addition to the meeting which was going to be, also remains, but would be held, I believe it's the twenty-third of May as well. Also, I was pleased to attend the report on the library strategic plan on this past Saturday, the twenty-third, in the main library. Library Director Leslie Morrissey and consultant of the library presented the results of their strategic plan, and presented a copy of that to each member of the board, and we will They presented a copy of that to each member of the board, and we will see what further unfolds with the library board on that strategic plan. As was noted, very pleased to attend the licensing ceremony and play a small role in it in terms of the very gratifying experience we all, we all shared. It was quite breathtaking to be at that location and participating with so many people, doing such great work. So it's just remarkable to behold. We look forward to all, all the, the good things yet to come with that marvelous facility. And my compliments to the board on your leadership now almost two years ago in determining that you wanted to pursue the licensing for that facility, which really was the first step to make it all possible. So good things came from that. And also, I want to thank all members of the board for your vote of confidence this evening with the merit increase and, and an extension of my contract. And I appreciate it very much, and I look forward to continuing to work with you in all these capacities. So again, my, my thank you for your kindness and support. That concludes my report.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. We are adjourned.